Wow, that was a lot of days.
Yeah, we gotta set up what's happening after the prologue.
A month after the incident at Gorilla Fortress, a sense of lingering unease still hung over the Empire.
Oh, the... me?
The government increased patrols by the railway military police as part of their counter-terrorism measures. While the noble faction bolstered their provincial armies, there were even rumors that they'd hired several Jaeger corps. At the center of everything was the Imperial Liberation Front. They had allied with a terrorist group from the Republic of Calvert to attack the Trade Conference in Crossbell. And as we'd seen firsthand, had attacked Gorilla Fortress in an attempt to fire the two railway guns stationed there. They'd made it abundantly clear that they were no mere insurgents. These were dangerous people we were dealing with. And following their attempts to target Chancellor Osborne and the reformist faction, rumors started to spread of a possible connection between the Imperial Liberation Front and the noble faction itself. Meanwhile, new information was filtering in from Crossbell that surprised us all. During the conference, one of the representatives of Crossbell's state government made the daring declaration that Crossbell would soon declare its independence, breaking free from its neighbors, Calvert and Erebonia. To no one's surprise, both the Imperial government and the noble faction dismissed it as nothing more than "delusional raving." But one thing was clear: That declaration only served to increase the tension in Erebonia and across the continent.
So things suck, basically.
Yeah, but we have our establishing shots of Trista still, so that's nice.
The one thing that hasn't changed.
There's Kitty.
Scratch the children! No...
She hates them.
Oh, she does hate them! Oh, it's good! They'll get their comeuppance.
Tensions are running high, and that's kind of the effect that something like that can have. Did what happened at the railway guns end up happening? No! But it was close!
But it was really close!
The Academy's prestigious Board of Directors gathered for their first meeting of the year.
Ah, it's fun! Some familiar faces.
We know them all now.
Yeah, we do!
She still doesn't like it! Get out of here, Sharon!
Yeah.
Conference room. With a sign underneath that says "conference room."
I was gonna say!
Thanks.
Yeah.
And that concludes my biannual report. Good, good. It seems the Academy is running like a well-oiled machine. No administrative issues to speak of. Student performance is sitting comfortably above the national average on exams and on general aptitude tests, too.
The second-year students seem to be having a banner year as well. The Student Council President in particular has built up an outstanding array of extracurricular achievements. Well, she attended last month's Trade Conference, and from what I hear, she put the professional secretaries to shame. I only wish the conference could have ended on a more... positive note.
I'll say. The share prices of my company have been on a real rollercoaster ride ever since.
Undoubtedly. What happened at the Trade Conference has wreaked havoc on the economy as a whole. But moving on.
Buy music!
It's nice while it lasted!
I couldn't help but notice in the recent exam reports that Class 1 and 2's academic performance seems to be slipping.
We're Class 7, so this doesn't affect me at all!
Perhaps the preferential treatment given to the upper-class students is hindering their scholastic development?
Uh...
Oh!
Well, students belonging to the nobility are allowed to return home during August to learn more about their family's lands. It's a tradition here, but one I can't help but wonder if we've outgrown the need for in this modern age.
If I may, traditions accumulate and hold meaning only so long as they're preserved. Our nation's culture, its arts, its social classes... All are rich with tradition that makes Erebonia what it is. And I believe we have a duty to protect and uphold them. After all, does not this very institution champion the ideals of its founder, Emperor Drakos?
Indeed it does. Though I've always understood Drakos' intent to be the founding of an academy for the people. Even 200 years ago, when education was seen as the province of the nobility, male commoners were permitted to enroll. Today, we have plenty of young women attending, and the commoners easily outnumber the nobles on campus. Perhaps it's time we started taking strides to realize Emperor Drakos' true ideal.
So these tensions are permeated.
Yeah, no kidding!
This entire system is entrenched.
You seem to be laboring under a few misconceptions here. Commoners were permitted to attend, but only as retainers. Retainers served knights who served lords who served the emperor. That's the way the Erebonian society functioned. From that vantage, the structure of the academy in its earlier days certainly seems to have embodied that social order. And if that's so, what is there to suggest that it's not the social order itself that has become the aberration?
Well...
For one, if that were the case, it would be far easier for me to see my views put into practice. But I can hardly get a word in edgewise between you two. Well, I'd certainly enjoy a return to the way things were in Drakos' time, at least in that particular respect.
Our apologies, your highness.
Well, our role here is to consider your views and work toward implementing them.
See what I mean? Would you be so kind as to help me out here, principal?
I'm here to moderate this board. It wouldn't do for me to express my position on the issues at hand. That said, I'm sure your passion for reform will triumph in the end, your highness.
I suppose I should have known better than to look to my old teacher for sympathy. It warms my heart to see such a fine teacher-student relationship.
Now, if I may, I'd like to steer this discussion toward a rather timely topic. We've already touched on the issues regarding the Orbal net and the Orbal staves, but... I'd like to stress again that the adoption of new security measures for the Orbal net should be a top priority.
Seems prudent.
Yeah.
I'm certainly inclined to agree. But we'll have to rely on the Foundation directly as things are looking a little shaky with the IBC.
You can leave that to me. The other matter I'd like to review is the use of the Orbal staves and the Arcus units. Or more specifically, we need to talk about how Class 7 should operate from here on out.
Hey, it's us!
Yeah, the conversation is relevant again!
Setting aside the fact that my daughter is a member of Class 7, I think we need to reconsider how the class should be run in light of what happened at Gorilla Fortress. While it certainly proved an excellent chance to see what the Arcus units are capable of, I have serious doubts about whether we should carry on with these field studies given the current political climate.
This is a fair assessment.
Yeah.
While things worked out in that particular case, we still had a bunch of students who were thrust into a multinational threat.
Yeah. We could have died.
It would be difficult to do so, I admit. With the terrorists at large and the problems in Crossbell unresolved, these are uncertain times.
At the very least, I believe it may be in the class's best interest to cancel this month's field study. We could always resume them once the terrorists have been arrested and the situation in Crossbell calms down.
Arise, oh youth, and become the foundation of the world.
What?
Who was that quoting?
I'm sure you all recognize the words of Emperor Drakos.
Oh.
They've become something of a school motto here.
Yeah, we've heard them before.
Probably.
It's my belief that Class 7's actions at Gorilla Fortress perfectly embody the spirit of that directive. They stood together to stop a tragedy in the making and, in a sense, protected the foundation of our world. No one ordered them to do it. They took action of their own free will because they knew in their hearts what was right. Some might call it recklessness. Some may think it rash. Some may even venture to call it hubris. However, as chairman of this academy, I'm incredibly proud of what the brave young men and women of Class 7 achieved.
Your highness?
Troubled times may lay in store for Erebonia and for the entire continent in the months and years to come. But I believe that makes something like Class 7's field studies all the more significant. The experiences they're having now will help them find the strength and the means to press on through adversity. I can't be the only one who feels this way, can I?
They do seem to be showing remarkable growth. That much is true. Although I have no idea how much my daughter is really capable of, immature as she is.
I could say the same of my hothead of a son.
I do wonder about my brother sometimes. However, it does seem that enrolling at this academy has helped him start breaking out of his shell.
With the Academy Festival coming next month, we hadn't even planned a field study. So the issue at hand is just whether to hold a field study at the end of this month or not. I'd like to ask those in favor of going ahead with this month's field study to please raise their hands.
And of course, we won't even get to see the results.
And we'll never know!
I kinda wanna go on a field study again. They're fun, even though, I mean, they make good points that it's dangerous and... You know, stuff.
Might die.
Might die, but...
Alright, I'd like to begin by taking everyone's ideas for our classes' part in the school festival.
Whoa, we've got a plan going.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, good thing I couldn't possibly read that.
Equipment setup and the other preparatory work will begin in the afternoon two days before the start of the festival. But there's a lot of preparation needed before we get to that point, and the sooner we get that underway, the better.
That's all the more reason to figure out what exactly we want to do. Some of our options include displays, events, stage shows, and cafes. Does that sound right, Crow?
Yeah, though no class I know would settle for just some simple display. I mean, come on, no one ever said, "Boy, we better rush to get in the line for that display!"
Well, either way, I'd like to start by soliciting some ideas from all of you. We're just brainstorming right now, so feel free to say whatever comes to mind.
Uh-oh.
Okay. Will we say anything?
Dot-dot-dot. Millium freaking out.
Oh my god, we're dead silent! Yeah, no, this is not working very well. We got nothing! We're so inspired, you guys!
Would it kill you all to give just a teensy bit of cooperation?
We're thinking, man! Takes time! Oh, we're not talking.
I know, I know, it's just...
It's kinda hard to focus right now.
Yeah, we did almost die a month ago. I think we need to talk about that.
This seems kinda trifling in comparison to, you know...
Right?
What just happened.
Yes, exactly!
You're one to talk, standing up there with your nervous fidgeting.
Well, I can't say I'm surprised.
The Board of Directors is in session as we speak, deciding what'll happen to our class.
And those of us with family members who sit on that board probably have even more cause for concern.
Yeah.
Yeah. Valid.
You can say that again. We can't even be sure whether there'll be a field study this month.
That's about the long and short of it. With everything that happened during last month's field study, it honestly wouldn't surprise me if they just canceled it.
I can't say I have any particular feelings of attachment to our field studies, but I refuse to accept needless changes to our curriculum. Especially with my brother involved in the decision-making process.
Yeah, I can see what you mean.
Makes sense to me. We also have to account for the fact that going on our field study means that much less time to prepare for the festival. So as you can see, it presents a bit of a problem.
Man! Look at you guys, taking this all seriously.
Um... I probably should have asked a little earlier, but... What's this festival you guys keep talking about?
Sometimes there's moments where she sounds drunk and slurs her words.
Yeah.
Millium, are you okay?
It's fitting.
Do we need to talk?
Wait, seriously?
Oh, I'm sorry. I should have gone over that for your benefit.
Every year, the students here organize and put on a school-wide festival. There are stage events, food stalls, and all kinds of things to see and do. And it generally falls to each of the first-year classes to provide the main attractions.
Yeah, participating is optional for the second years since by this point they're usually focusing on their future careers. Oh, and each of the clubs generally get involved, too.
Play music for everyone, Elliot!
In that case, we have to do something! We can't just let the other classes roll over us 'cause we're small! You say that, but... I've already had one of the girls from Class 1 bluster up to me declaring that "This time, victory will be all ours!"
What?
Excuse me?
That sounds exactly like something she'd say.
Who? I'm sorry, I don't know who this is.
We've met her a couple times.
Okay.
Well, Class 1 does seem to have had it in for us ever since the midterm results were announced.
Oh yeah, we're smarter than everyone. I remember that.
If it's all the same, I'd rather not see the House of High-Arms claim yet another nominal victory.
Yarms!
Yarms!
Good ol' Patrick.
Yeah, I agree with you, buddy. We don't want him winning.
But we need to account for the fact that our class is markedly smaller than theirs is.
That's certainly true.
It'd help if we at least knew what the other classes are doing.
Here comes Ring the Leader.
Yep, gotta get him focused, y'all!
Come on, everyone, get it together!
Oh, never mind, teacher will do that.
Hey.
Instructor Sarah?
Uh, isn't this a self-study period?
Oh, it was! But I thought you all might like to know that the Board of Directors meeting just adjourned a few minutes ago.
And they're gonna kill all of you!
Oh, boy!
Stab, stab!
...to skip along down here and be the first to break the news.
Please, good news, I hope?
Then...
What about our next field study? Are we still on?
The chancellor's not the only one with a little too much iron in his blood. Because the board voted unanimously to have you continue your field studies.
Cool. Thanks, y'all! You mean it?
So that's how it is.
You know, even though they're always hard work, I actually feel a little relieved.
Considering all that happened last month, we'll need to be especially careful this time around.
Still, it feels like our field studies are a big part of who we are as a class.
Yeah.
They're kind of a pain, but no worries.
We should be grateful to his highness and the directors.
That's good news!
Seeing the hard road and the easy road, then picking the hard one anyway... That's youth for you.
Hey, you're not that much older than us!
It also sounded like his highness and the directors will be taking off in pretty short order. So I'll let you guys out of study hall early to go see them if you want.
Oh!
If you say so.
I think I'll take you up on that.
Yeah, he wants to see his brother!
He just jumps out the window! And I'm off!
Bye, everyone! I can't wait to get out of this classroom!
I hate this study hall. Let me out of this study hall.
Yeah! What is her outfit? Why, ma'am? I don't get it.
It's the tip-top of fashion.
Yeah, okay, so like, the skirt part is cool and the scarf is cool, and then just like the random colors in the torso just don't make sense. Look at all of our pristine vehicles!
Yeah. Everyone has a limo.
Yes.
Hello, mother. Hello, father.
Why are we all here? Be like, "Oh, frame rate, please, don't die."
Frame rate and the group shots. It just tries its hardest. I imagine the PC version fixed that. I imagine the PS4 version will fix that.
Yeah. Yeah, we did a thing. We saved the world. Well, like, three countries involved, at least.
Yeah. Saved Crossbell.
Yeah!
And the other two countries from war, so...
Yeah, last time we saw each other, I was locked in my basement. Because Dad is the worst. I don't remember this. Oh wait, LeGrum is Laura's hometown, right? Or no?
Uh... yes?
Oh, gosh. Ah, it's been too long. Yeah, that does sound like a thing. 'Cause I think we saw his car, like, at the entrance. And... we're like, "What is Rufus doing here?" And then the great houses are doing things and stuff. Oh, shots fired!
Bah!
This conversation's going great!
Why did I come over here?
Yeah, right? Great talk, mom!
I should have seen this coming.
Yeah.
Meanwhile, the people who don't have family members here...
Yeah.
We're all over here talking to him.
Yeah?
Yay!
Oh, boy! That's what we want! Yeah, I'll just summon him right now!
There it goes! He comes out and just knocks all of us over.
Ah!
There's no room!
Yeah. Yeah, that might be nice. You're probably, like, giving away key information here.
We don't see quite as much of his playful side as we do in the Sky Games, but we get glimpses every now and then.
Yeah? Oh, introduction! Mueller Vander. That's not a great name, sir.
Mueller Vanda Vanda Mueller.
Seriously?
Major Mueller Vander.
Yeah, there's just too many "er" s happening. Vr, vr, vr!
Everyone's connected.
Everybody! No!
All of them!
Pull your jets! Romantically? I'm down! I ship it!
They go back a ways.
Sweet. Oh, I'm thinking about things! That's not good!
Thinking's terrible!
Thinking is bad!
Mueller's also from Sky, by the way.
Oh, is he?
Yeah, so we see more of the two of them.
Oh, that's fun.
He gets more exasperated more often because... Well, his charge is constantly a pain in the ass.
Yeah.
Always on his worst behavior in those games. And he's kinda like the guy who has to keep him in line, at least in the major spots where it matters. But he can only do so much because, as we now know, Oliver is pretty high up on the chain.
Yeah. He can do what he wants.
He is the prince. Well, one of the princes.
Yeah.
The moon came and hit Erebonia. The four giants were nowhere to be found.
Yes, and now tis the final day. Only 24 hours remain. And now we're gonna die. It's gonna be great.
Back to school life!
Yeah, it's fast! Free day! Oh my god!
A practical exam.
Oh, practical exams, whatever, man! That's like, several days away. I don't got time for that.
What are we gonna fight this time?
More robots?
Been people the last couple times.
Oh, yeah. I forgot about that.
Fought Patrick and his sexist bros.
Yep.
Fought our own classmates with Millium and Crow.
That was a thing we did.
No more hopeless, hapless robots. Why was I created? You just hit me!
That hurts!
There's those green eyes.
I missed those. Yeah, I know, we're working on it, okay? We were kinda just talking in circles last time, though.
That will be awful. Everyone will laugh at us.
Yeah, it's gonna be really uninteresting.
Stand bow!
Yes. It's so happy, every time.
Yes. It's nice to have some happiness concerning... Yes. It's nice to have some happiness, considering how serious everything has been for the last, you know, couple days.
I could use a free day, for sure.
Couple days of playable time, not the ones we skipped, were very dramatic and tense.
Okay, got it. We can be spies.
Yes, espionage.
Espionage, which should definitely not be me, because I am the most, like, obvious person. Or, like, everyone knows me, so it definitely should not be me.
Yeah, it can't be you, it can't be Laura, it can't be you, sis.
Right.
Can't be Crow.
Uh, it could be Fee. She's sneaky and small.
Probably shouldn't be Millium, she sticks out. So you gotta be like Machius, the Wind Bros, maybe?
Yeah.
Some of those guys need to try and get information, because yeah, everybody else, much too famous slash infamous.
Yeah, all so true. What? What is this now? Oh, I thought he meant, like, competition among ourselves. Oh! Costumes!
You'll look at them.
I will look at them.
Don't get too excited.
I, I sure won't. Wait, what? That's just what I had. Oh, and then that's, I see.
You can switch between them willy-nilly, essentially.
Oh, okay.
So if you want jacket or no jacket.
Uh, I can't remember what we had before this. Was it just the...
I think it was the summer ones right before this.
Okay, let's go back to the red jacket.
Says it was too hot.
Too hot. Scorchin'.
They don't have Orbal air conditioners here like they do in some of the other rich places.
Yeah, the school's too broke for that.
So we took off our jackets, but now it's getting to be fall.
Yes, exactly. Now it's time to put 'em back on. And, uh, look snazzy. Hey, it's a VV, maybe. Okay, no, it's not, I lied. Who's this? Vincent. Okay! I just wanna leave you alone, sir!
The nobles. It's Ferris.
Oh, hey! Well, she seems like a decent human being. Oh! Oh, I see what's happening!
Margarita. Wasting away again in Margaritaville.
That is beautiful.